Did Shirley ask if the key got changed or something?
The key?
Yeah, the key that we have in the door over here.
No, it hasn't changed.
That was a red...
Which one?
The red key doesn't work.
Very big and gentle.
But that's been years.
No, the red key doesn't work.
Oh. Oh, okay. We'll see. We'll get it.
You're welcome.
She brought the check up yesterday and...
No, that's what I'm gonna handle later when I look at it next year, okay? I just put them on, we'll see what they put out. I had them on at ten o'clock.
I don't know why either. Oh, maybe because of the lot system, use it automatically, we can lock it from the back. So that lot would be changing that lot, and that would be it. That might have been the reason why, because I need to get my key for that.
Okay, I'd like to call a special meeting to order. Will be, please rise and say your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Chris. Chris K U E H N E.
K U E H N E?
Yeah.
And what's your first name?
Christopher. Chris.
Okay. Roll call, Mark, I'm here. Gerald Gibson?
Here.
Beck is not here. Sharon?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tom Brown?
Yes.
George Augustine is here for Pat.
Here.
And then Chris is here. Okay, I'd just like to mention one thing. This is not a, this is a special meeting under the budget, oh, not budget, it's the next one. For the workshop for, this is a special meeting on workshop, on hiring of the 24 12-hour firemen. That is all that's on the agenda, and that's all we'll do today, because that's what we're supposed to do. Okay, anybody want to start? I, okay. Let's start with Dave. What do you got, Dave?
Well, I guess my, just from thinking about this and working towards what we want to do, I get some feedback that maybe we shouldn't be doing medicals, maybe we should. So I guess my first question is, if we still want to do medicals for the Pink County Fire Department, where we would be an MFR department and do the MFR runs for our district. That is, I guess, my question. I know what the department, my feeling is as chief, and my feeling of my men, is that we need to be medically trained and do the responses. And the whole purpose of putting on paid people is to cover those medical responses in times when we don't have personnel to do that. So that's my question, is does the board want to do that? The other option is, it was brought up in an email I got that we're looking at doing a, other departments are looking at doing an authority, where my feeling on that is we would combine with Mount Forest, Garfield, Gibson, and our department, and put in a group together and just have a mobile response unit that would respond along with them, once separate from our department. And that's kind of the second question I have, is do we want to do that? I'm just trying to throw out all the options so we're not in the year looking back saying, hey, why, we should have done it this way, it's not working out, you know? So those are the two points that, I guess, we feel it's responsibility of the fire department to be making medical runs. That's a big, my first two questions kind of take those.
I have a question. Can I ask a question in relations to, the other day when we had the guy from Auburn here? And he said that if it was a first responding unit, and I believe all our vehicles are first responders.
Were licensed responding.
For every one of the vehicles, right?
No.
Okay.
Just the engine, the rest, two rescues, and the tanker.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, that's what made me nervous was the fact that he said, you know, if it's licensed as a first responding unit, you have to have a first responding person there. On it, in it.
To be involved with it, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess that was my only question, that was a question I had, and I wanted to see you to ask you if that was, if they were all first responding, or if we do have a vehicle that is not.
That's why Ron takes the brush truck and responds with that.
Okay. That was my question.
I guess I got the question, Dave, when you brought up this deal about all the townships getting together and having some type of emergency response team. Does that sort of take place with Northern Bay ambulance?
No, it would be, it would be not take place Northern Bay ambulance. It would be, let me refer to it as a medical response unit. It would be one firefighter that would be hired by either an entity that would be just the townships and the city. We would hire one person, and he would respond, and we would cover that 24 hours a day, supplied by, paid for by all the other townships, just like Northern Bay. And that person would respond along with the ambulance. He would come from different, go all over, he would float.
So anytime the ambulance would be called out, this guy would go too?
Right. He would go there, do what we do now, help lift, and do the medical all down the scene until the ambulance got there and transported. And then he would stay in the northern area to cover while the ambulance was gone. That's why I referred to doing something, either do it through Northern Bay, put on a one-man unit, and cover it that way 24 hours a day with the backup of, you know, if we wanted to stay medical first responders, we would back them up, but not be licensed or however we wanted to do it. It's just a theory that I came up with about three years ago and discussed with some of the chiefs, and it kind of has been dormant since then. And now with this, it kind of turned up again that it may be an option.
I think it's something we need to look at, because even David, we've put a 24-hour in our fire department, you know, like we were talking last time. When they don't have enough people, we're going to be mutualizing. So, I mean, it's something we need some of that.
It's just, the problem comes with what we're having, what Auburn has, what Garfield has, what anybody has, is they covering those medical runs. Because you'll see in some of the reports I got from the 911, you know, we're at, you know, the one year we had 740 calls for our department, and 86% probably was medical. So this would relieve a lot of the pressure on the men, and a lot of pressure on the department.
You've talked to the other groups about that now, lately?
I have mentioned it to the chiefs on and off, yeah.
And how do they feel that at all?
They're, you know, they're in the same bind we are. We don't have people to go, you know? And it would be a way of covering that.
Have you figured out any cost? What's a good number?
It's just, I can't, you gotta come up, and you gotta come up with a plan before you can put a cost to it. I imagine it would be basically the same cost that we're looking at to do it for ourselves for the 12 hours, and times it by two. But then you're dividing it either equally amongst the people, if you're doing percentages amongst the people, amongst the entities, then you would, that's where you would have to stop and figure.
And what number was that, Dave, the cost? What number were you using?
I was...
You didn't calculate no cost?
I was probably going...
Oh, you came up with it.
I was probably going to use, you know, $14. That, as you look in the booklet, you'll see Caugh Collins, and you'll see Auburn's actual pay rate. You know, they range from $10 an hour to $14 an hour, $17 an hour, $18 an hour. If, that's why I'm saying if we tied it in with Northern Bay, we could tie it in with Northern Bay and say, alright, there's three people that would be on a shift at Northern Bay, and we could use some of those people that they have there. It's just an idea that I drew out to cover our issues, so.
How is that going to help Fraser Township getting a fire truck back at our station?
Well, it's not going to help get a fire truck back to the station, because I need, our main concern right now is that we're doing 86% medical runs. To get a fire truck back at the station, I have to have a man that's trained for 290 hours, that has an experience, and someone there all the time. I need, I need people. I need people from Fraser Township that can respond quick to get to the station in that 24 hours a day.
And the trouble is people, right? Always, somebody?
People don't want to be, that's why I'm saying we have to pay an hourly wage to get people maybe to be interested in coming. I don't know what... The thing is that I can't get people to want to volunteer to be on the department at $10 a fire run, and go through the training and not get paid while they're at the training for six months. That, to get a fire, to get the fire truck, I need fire, trained firefighters to work. And this one, we're, you know, it's like Auburn. Majority of the ones they hired are not firefighters. They're just medical people, and then when the call comes in, the rest of the, the rest of the department, the firefighters, come and do the firefighting.
I talked to some fire chiefs in Clay Township, and the way they do it, they pay, they have guys available, they pay them some amount of money, whatever that is, like per day, or whatever, per week, if they're available for certain times, or it's on a schedule, says you cover this timeframe, this is how much money you're going to get. Somebody else covers, you know, from six till noon, and somebody covers from 12 noon to...
Right.
And then they get paid a fixed amount of money even though they're not even called.
Right. To be on call, yeah.
Yeah, called. That they are compensated something for being on call.
Right. If you look at Caugh Collins, that's the way, they have a separate, but the issue comes is that $110 or $112 for 12 hours is not minimum wage. So you have a minimum wage issue becoming. You have, then you also have to take out FICA, and those figures that have to come out.
Well, the way he was saying that they were not being paid per hour, they were just being paid some stipend to cover that period of time. So it wasn't based on an hourly rate, it was based on saying, hey, we're going to give you 30 bucks for something.
And that, and that has to come with how, you know, you decide that you want to pay him if we confine people to do it.
Well, I'm just saying this is the way they're doing it, you know, like I said, I called him, and he would just give me something, I met the guy in Frankham, they had a session, a seminar there, talking about how to finance fire department, and how to, you know, pay for those things and so forth. That was some of the things that this guy mentioned, is that they have a figure that they say, hey, we pay the guy so much, he doesn't run or not, I mean, but it's not based per hour, they just came up with a number, saying this is how much we're going to give you for six hours a time, or something like that. I don't know, that's another way to look at it as well.
Who are the authorities you're picking among, Dave? Like you've talked to? Garfield, Mount Forest, Os, is that it?
I've talked to Garfield, Mount Forest, and those are the only departments, and Mount Forest is covering Gibson as it is. I haven't talked to board members, or council, trustees, or supervisors. I'm just throwing it up to the chiefs to maybe get back to their board.
What did you put together here? Is this a share's part?
I've got a couple more questions I want to add here. Now, this is a 24-hour shift, seven days a week with the authority, is that what you're talking about?
Well, that's what I would suggest, so it would cover, and it would, it would take, it would take, it would give us the medical coverage that we need. The, my big concern is that if we quit doing it, we don't, we don't have medical coverage when Northern Bay's gone. This way we have coverage and that, because the other day we had a shooting, the ambulance was in Bay City, and we had to wait for an ambulance to get up from Bay City to ask, and we had to take care of the individual. So the ambulance, Northern Bay is not staying here all the time.
And they're going out more and more.
And they're going out more.
Sharon? Any other questions for Dave?
I'll make the question up here, Louis.
Yeah, just to reiterate what Sharon said. Northern Bay is not only going out more and more, Bay City, McLaren is calling them into Bay City, a lot of times on the south end.
Yep.
And a lot of times up in Hampton.
Yeah.
So then, you guys are really getting short of a lot more than just your own runs. Not that your own runs aren't at 650, 700, a lot of times they're down there. And a lot of times they'll only get halfway, two quarters way there, and they get called off. But meanwhile, that's what, about a hamper in the year, 40 minutes maybe to get back? So you really need something.
You guys have no way then of manning a second ambulance in this town? Is that what it goes down to, you have two people on duty, and that's it? And then you have nobody, because if you're going to have, if you're going to have a jump car or something like that, that person's going to have to be paramedic. You can't just make a fireman and just drive around all day. You've got to have...
Right.
Otherwise it's not going to do any good, if you're going to get a squad there, and, you know? But on the other hand, even the chief from Auburn at the last meeting, you know, we were talking about it, and he was like, if you take EMS out of the fire department, you know, it's going to come back and bite you one of these days, okay? You can't just, you can't get, you can't get a referendum, you can't get nothing nowadays from people who are not going to pay to have guys sitting in the firehouse waiting for a fire call. You tell them though that you want that money because you're going to put another ambulance at, there's going to be, there'll be one here and there'll be one at Station 16, and that's fine, because the public doesn't need to know that those people then need to be cross-trained so that they're also, they're a jump company. So they can, if there's a fire, you take the engine out. If it's an ambulance call, you take, you know, we, you know, I was fortunate, you know, we worked, you know, we had five man minimum staffing at each of our stations, you know? So, but the engine and the ambulance went everywhere together. And so, if there's a house fire, we knew that we were going to have five guys there right away, you know, until the other stations got there, and until our auto aid companies. And as far as mutual aid goes, that's just, you know, that's something you're going to have to live with. And I'm sorry that if they're going to pick on you guys here because you have an ambulance available, and that's just, that's just how life goes, you know? But to take the, take EMS out of the fire services, it's, I think, just a huge mistake. And it's going to come back and bite you guys, you know? Just...
It's just first responders out of the fire station.
Whether that, but again, at least it's a, at least that, if you want to, if you're going to hire like new paid on-call guys, and you want to say, well, there's no reason why they shouldn't be trained as EMTs, you know? Obviously, I came from a bar where everybody was a paramedic.
Firemen? Are firemen trained as EMTs?
Yes.
Yeah, some of yours are, I think, chief.
One, two, three, four of us right now.
Yeah. So I mean, it's just a good idea to, on first responders, it's a good class for people who are just, you know, but...
Dave, what do you look at? I guess my question is going to be for you, is what is your opinion? You know, you're our chief, and we kind of expect to look at you and say, you know, what do you recommend as far as going with Northern Bay or going with fire department? Which do you feel would be easier? Am I putting you on the spot? I don't want to.
Well, I'm throwing out the two options.
Yeah, but you, but you have a background in this.
I'm throwing out the two options that we can do. The, either we, for me, or for our department, I would say I'd rather see the 12-hour person to cover our shift and keep our fire department trained at the level of time. The other option is, is that I would like to see the Northern Bay, because we can have their licensure at a advanced level from what we are, because that responding personnel can be a paramedic, that can start care to that person as far as meds, as far as anything else. And I haven't discussed this with Bob, Mr. LaSalle, but that would be my reasoning for it, is that it's the care to the people quicker and where we need it. Because that way, that licensure can, can stay. And the big thing, what I'm saying, if we do Northern Bay, tie it with them, it is a better blend of our MFR service and Northern Bay service. So it's, it's something that Northern Bay could make compensation on. And, you know, example, we have a call at, at Mount Forest Township Hall, person's down. We, the echo unit could be called, Northern Bay's in Bay City, the echo unit can be called, Mount Forest could be called to assist the echo unit if they stay MFR trained. And even if they don't, they still can come and do some basic care, and that person can get stimulated, get drugs, and get revived and intubated. It's just a better service for us. It's just a blend that will work better.
Northern Bay run enough calls to warrant a second ambulance?
We had a second ambulance on Northern Bay for how many months, George? For the summer?
Uh, August, well, I think it started in July, about three months we had. And we did have it, and we're looking at it next year to do it again.
It didn't pay for itself, or it...
Pardon me?
It didn't pay for itself, or what?
Yeah, it looked like it paid for itself, yeah, for the short time we had, yes, it did, yeah. And that's why we're going to look at it again, to do it again, see.
Louis, what's your opinion as a firefighter, a chief?
Well, the discussion you've just had, what George just said, I agree with that, George. When you had the two ambulances this summer, being that I listen to the open channel all the time, I'm hearing everything, and there's been even times, not only Pinconning, Fraser Township, but also Mount Forest, Garfield, Os, and Gibson, I can't remember who that, but there's been times when a heart attack went down unknown, full rush, and both of those ambulances went. Man, that's the best of everything. Now you've got two ALS units, one is only going to transport, but you've got the best medical people you could ever ask for. Then with your fire department just backing that up, I mean, that's exactly the best way to go. The other thing is if you're looking for coverage for, it sounds like the medical runs are the problem. Yeah, definitely Northern Bay. I mean, they know all the rules, the regulations, they got all the licenses, they got the rigs there. You don't even have to buy them. You could just work something out with them, and let your fire departments in the surrounding areas just run first response with them. That second rig would be a huge, huge asset. Yeah, that three months you guys did that this summer was excellent.
But the problem, my discussion with Bob about that was staffing again, you know? Staffing and getting enough people to come up and work, so.
Well, again though, Dave, if the entities decide on a wage, that'll take care of staffing, because they'll pull them off an MMR and anywhere else if they can make more money up here.
Yeah.
And you've got to train ALS people, not DLS. DLS people, you know, knock on wood, thank God they're around, but they're only a little bit better than our first responders, EMTs.
If, for some chance, and I'm asking you, Dave, if a fire came in right now, how many fire, I know we have mutual aid, but how many firefighters can we, can you think of that would respond?
There would probably, from our department, there would probably be the top of four during the daytime.
And then, Louis, on your department, how many mutual aid, or how many would respond to this fire that we're having?
Comfortably, hopefully, if they're home, two, right this time of day.
Okay.
Unless...
Say two?
Two. Unless guys happen to be, you know, on vacation from work in their home or something.
And that's a problem across the country, too.
I understand.
So you guys understand, this is every place, and that's why departments all, you know, you know, Barbara and I started it, that's, they were just, it's all volunteer, and then, but then the time comes, and then you have to start looking at the future, you've got to start building towards it, you know? And part of that is, you know, is, is the time going to come when Northern Bay should merge with the fire department, and it should be one entity, you know? Instead of three separate taxing bodies, should it just be a fire district? And I think those are all things that you guys need to start looking at for the future, because in 10 years, I don't think that you'll recognize the, this township the way it stands today. I think that there'll be a lot more industry, retail, and things like that going on here. You just have to start small and just realize you're going to have to keep, you know? That is going to require more money, I don't know what, you know?
And you've got to realize all the entities don't have the same funding.
Right.
You know, we're trying to do fire department, we're trying to do MBA, so it all, you know? And we're not all equal as far as getting money, you know? We know that.
No, we're not. That's, you know, that's one reason why, you know, you might think about going to a district, doing your own separate taxing body. A, you're not sharing money with anybody, you know? I mean, I know plenty of departments in Illinois that they're city departments, and their pension funds are only 25% funded, you know? Because they borrow from Peter, they never pay Paul back, and so they're never, ever getting on top of things. And the last thing you want is for that to happen, you know?
It's not going to take care, if we, if we went with Northern Bay, I understand, and I guess I would lean that way because of the medical training, but it doesn't...
How you talking about going with Northern Bay? I got me confused here. You're talking about going with other entities as an authority?
Other entity, no, wait, 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 Mark. Going, just having another unit, and it coming out of Northern Bay, so it serves everybody's five units of government, but to not taking care of the problem, and one of the problems is Fraser Township. Having that station, we need to make sure there's coverage there, right?
That is correct.
That, that's one of the issues, and I'm... That, that's one of the issues and I'm, I haven't forgot that issue. Okay?
As I know we talked before, when we lost our fire truck, that if we hired a one man or a twenty-four hour man, that it will be stationed in Fraser Township.
Right, right.
What are you gonna do with one guy there? Who's gonna, who's gonna patrol what that guy does?
It's not patrol.
Is he gonna?
It's the setup the equipment before the other people, just like a UGAC.
He's just gonna sit there for twenty-four hours? Is that how you, you know, you wanna hire one guy to sit for twenty-four hours?
That's what they do in Kokol, and that's correct, twelve hour shift, that's right.
Yeah, that guy, yeah. You know? And so...
And we talked about this before, Dave was there, you know, why we lost our truck in Fraser is that they have people here that they can get somebody here right away and then they can get things ready and then everybody else could show up and they could go. Where if it was at Fraser, everybody'd have to go down to Fraser, there's nobody to set up the truck to get things ready then it'd take more time to get things going. Am I correct, Dave?
That was the safety of getting people back.
Well, yeah, that would certainly, I mean, if you had all your guys from this end of the district who then had to drive to Station sixteen, because the one guy in the engine's just gonna have to sit there so someone shows up.
Same thing up here.
Right, well, yes, I mean, sure, you're still gonna, you know, but the other problem with you have one guy, and again, I was, you know, I talked to the, the chief from Auburn about that, is that the problem he has is, he's the part-time chief and he gets paid, I don't know, eighteen thousand or something for that. But even he said, he's really not around enough to make sure those guys do anything, you know? You're just gonna have them sit in the station or, you know, someone's gonna have to come up with a set of rules and what they have to do during the day and there's house duties and things like that, you know? Toilets are clean and everything else, so I don't think one guy is gonna solve that.
Colin has twelve hour, one man for twelve hours.
On the other hand, if he had...
He doesn't have a twenty-four, twenty-four, he's just calling...
No, because they have the chief the other day.
If, if you look in your packet, there's one that explains...
Wanted me to read something?
Yeah. It, it explains what he does and then the, the rate that they're paid. They have like eight different levels of pay.
I've seen that.
Ten different levels, so, um, that's how, you know? The chief is there five days a week and he's compensated by fifty-eight thousand dollars plus his, um...
That's, that's the way this guy in Clay Township, he's there five days a week, he gets paid sixty-five thousand dollars and everybody else is volunteer.
Right.
And they're only paid so much now. I guess the other question that this fellow here brought up, and we say, hey, we have one guy at Fraser Township, does he have to wait there until somebody comes? Can he go to the fire and then the guys meet him there with their vehicles? They all have sirens and so forth, don't they, can't they run?
He, we, if we had a guy there, yeah, he would respond to the fire, but, you know, it's, it's...
I'll just say it.
It takes...
And if he shows up by himself, he's gonna look pretty ridiculous.
Go ahead.
It's, it takes fifteen recommended, probably my ocean by, by, uh, NFPA that we have approximately fifteen firefighters for a house layer.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking, can he take off and go?
He can take the truck and get to the scene and, and care. But it would then depend on who else is coming, mutual aid from Kokol and other things.
I think that's the same thing Mount Forest has to do if they're fired during the day with only two firemen responding, you'd go there and then whoever showed up after they got there, correct?
No, what I got, Mark, is I got it set up for three departments are dispatched exactly at the same time. So, if I get a fire at Mount Forest Township Mall, Penconning, Garfield, Mount Forest, we dispatched at the same minute.
But you're one person or whoever's first on in, at your fire department would what? Take the truck to the scene?
Yes.
Yeah, I see. So, basically, the same, so I think you'd have one guy there, you'd take off. You wouldn't wait until everybody got there because now you gotta drive into the station and go back out. The guys with their vehicles, that's why they got the sirens and all that on their vehicles, they would head to the fire.
Well, we, we have them respond to the station because they gotta get their gear and get their trucks.
Right, and you don't want a bunch of vehicles on the scene anyway because you got enough as it is.
But the other entities come from their other stations, like Pinconny or...
Generally with their fire trucks, right?
Right.
Because you don't have any extra gear at your station.
No, each station's...
Everybody has their own turnout gear from what I understand.
Each station's eyes are on.
Let me ask this question, maybe it's a dumb question, can the truck be fitted with all the necessary gear for all the firemen, the ones that get there, that they just pop in a truck and get their gear, no?
Not enough room.
No, not enough room.
Not enough room.
Okay.
We're not allowed to carry our gear with us anywhere.
You want some time out on the fire truck itself?
It doesn't matter, no, no gear is supposed to be in a vehicle because of the chemicals that are in it, that appear on the fire, all the chemicals. On the equipment, you mean, on your turnout gear, the chemicals on your turnout gear, that's correct.
The op, yes, it shouldn't even be carried in your personal vehicle, inside.
On the other hand, if you had, um, a chief there and two paid on premise guys, then in theory, during the busiest times during the day, you'd have a three-man engine company going out which could probably handle seven or eight percent of all the calls that come in to here.
Mike, what do you think as supervisor at Mount Forest? I don't wanna drag you in, but, I mean, do you feel the same way that we could do something under the group that we have?
I like the idea of the authority. The five entities, six entities, whatever.
We have three entities.
Well, he's talking about, he's talking about if everybody was involved, Mount Forest, Garfield and all that.
That's the other two besides us. Gibson, you do Gibson.
There'd be six entities total of Gibson.
Cause there is three entities here with this.
Three, that's it.
Three and then the other two with the, Mount Forest and, uh, Garfield.
And we're one and, yeah.
We're, he's talking per unit of government, there's six townships.
Yeah.
Talking about units.
And what, or five townships and two, say everyone's three.
But the cost wise, if you're gonna break it down, you're gonna break it down to three units. You're not gonna break it down per entity like Pinconny, Pinconny City or Fraser Township.
I don't know.
Right?
Why?
Why, you know, the ambulance would do that way, break it down, we pay different amounts.
For that authority.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I'm just saying, I don't know, could that be?
And then you're still gonna pay what we pay, three-one thousand each per entity.
You're gonna have to look at, it's gonna cost you more money no matter what we look at.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
And I think we gotta look at, not just the more cost of money for us is, you know, you have to look at, we're not all equal. You know, and I'm not speaking about you and I, but I'm talking about city and what they have and what they're paying.
Gibson also. Mount Forest, Garfield, they're all smaller than us.
Yes. You're the big ones at the table.
And we don't have the fire department there.
Yeah, yeah, no truck.
Yeah, no truck.
Well, neither does Sims Township, so they pulled, when they joined that, their department was our great, their truck was pulled, so you're not the only ones.
You're the one collecting, uh, really toll for a fire department.
I'm fully aware of that.
That's, yeah, that's ninety-four thousand dollars a year.
I'm sure you hear about that all the time.
I am.
We hear about it all the time.
Then, then pay me sixty-five thousand dollars and I'll figure out something to do. Instead of four. You're gonna stay there then twelve hours. I could figure it out.
Do you come up with a cost of what we're gonna look at? I mean, even if you're looking at...
Can I go over mine?
Yeah, I would like that.
Okay, send everybody one.
I didn't get mine, so I'm sorry.
There's no way to go there.
I just worked this off from what we had at the one meeting, our last workshop meeting with the basics that have given to me from, uh, Kokol Township, uh, what I looked at, okay? When I sat down in the office and was thinking about this. So, it was off the top of my head after a couple of days of looking at it. And I was comparing more to Kokol's twelve-hour shifts, that they pay a hundred and ten, that's what I had, the information I had at the time, a hundred and ten hours per shift, it's a twelve-hour shift and fourteen dollars a run. Okay, so what I was looking at, at a twelve-hour shift, at a hundred and twenty per shift, a little bit more what they pay, I don't wanna be stealing people from Kokol when we got mutual aid, okay? So, I was figuring a hundred and twenty per shift, seven days a week, you got eight hundred and forty dollars per weekend and forty-three, almost forty-four thousand dollars a year for that twelve-hour shift. We break it down per entity, you know, it's, uh, almost fifteen thousand, plus what we're paying every year, thirty-one thousand is what we pay per entity per year. Uh, split three ways there, so each pay thirty-one thousand. So, if you add that, them two together, you're gonna be paying about forty-five thousand, forty-six thousand for the twelve-hour shift and what we do in our regular budget through the year. Not counting...
The runs.
The runs, yeah. So, you know, I, I was trying, I went going through nine months, so I was figuring a nine-month, uh, estimate on these medical runs, you know? We, we run about four hundred and eighty medical runs a year. Ninety-six of them are, uh, regular runs. And three hundred and eighty-four, oh, three hundred and eighty-four medical runs a year, estimate, okay? Ninety-six, uh, uh, regular runs a year, which is fire or whatever accidents. So, I estimate about four hundred and eighty total for the year, Dave.
In your packet?
I didn't have that at the time, I figured, but go ahead, tell me.
Yeah, in your packet it shows what each township had for, from two thousand fifteen to current. So, it shows, and that packet will break down what medicals were, what, um, call-out runs were in that township. And in two thousand, we'll go to the full year, two thousand eighteen, we had seven hundred and fifty runs for our station.
That's off, I love that, okay, about two hundred runs.
So, Fraser Township alone had, had in last year was two hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Right.
But it breaks down to each type of call. There also in the packet is, is a colored one that shows the times that the calls came in. So, you can see, it breaks it down into the hours that are heavy flow, um, for runs. Didn't break it down types, but it shows when the most runs are and that helps come with that timeframe that we've been looking at.
What was the timeframe we were looking at?
From six in the morning till six P.M.
That's why I gave you notice about what we're gonna talk about, Dave. Cause I know what you're gonna come up with.
I, I...
I don't have this information.
I, I, I have this information because
Right.
I'm, I wanna answer your questions and I wanna be not have you walking into the dark and, and not know what's going on.
And that's why I sent you my little notice a half of the time going, what I was gonna ask and what I was trying to set up. Like I say, I'm just working on estimates, you know, what's going on.
And it's, it's, you know, multiply it out again anyway.
Yeah.
I guess, I didn't understand what you had here, where you've got this nineteen-twenty budget per entity thirty-one oh six to seven.
That's what we pay every year, George.
That's what, that's what we pay?
Everybody pays, yeah.
Everybody pays.
But that doesn't include the run monies.
Huh?
That doesn't include the run monies.
That doesn't include the runs, that's what we pay.
So, that's why you got the cost up here for entities, so, cause that adds up the, uh, forty-three thousand, this. But I think that, you said per entity, so if I multiply that times three, right?
Well, I'm talking about if you split this by three is that.
Okay.
Okay, if I had, uh, forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty is what's gonna estimate a cost at a hundred and twenty dollars
Okay.
here. That's, that's this total here. Then if you put it, divided by three, it'd be fourteen thousand, five hundred and sixty. And we're already paying thirty-one thousand per entity, you know, because we split up to ninety dollars or whatever it is there. So, I'm just looking at a, a guesstimate right now, forty-five thousand, what we'll all be paying, almost forty-six thousand without runs. Medical or whatever it was. And then you get into a lot of different questions. Run schedules, you know, I, I put some of the questions at the bottom and after I did this all, I started thinking and of course, I, uh...
Didn't you, uh, break up those of the volunteers who are gonna be paid too on that?
Fourteen, yeah, I, broadened up to fourteen dollars an hour, that's correct.
And where is that cost down here?
Huh?
Is it?
Yeah, it says runs at fourteen dollars per run.
No, but when they pay that, is that firemen one and two and that's also EMS trained at fourteen, or they pay different rate?
Well...
Kokol.
That's what Kokol.
Kokol is paid, as you see on their pay schedule, they're paid completely different per hour. The first hour pays like fourteen dollars and the next hours are ten dollars a run. If you look at Auburn's, they have, they have, uh, different hourly rate. Again, that ranges from fifteen to nineteen dollars an hour. So, it just depends how, what pay schedule you're gonna be trying to do. But, you know, I definitely, in Mark's, some of Mark's figures wasn't figured of having extra men on a call, you know?
That's right, that's some of my questions that Bob...
If we're doing medicals...
That's what I said, it's a worksheet.
Then we're gonna have, we're gonna have, you know, we have to come up with what's gonna be an average of people there, so we're not short in the budget at the end of the year.
Yeah, like I say, at times runs, I put times three, so I have the one where it says just runs, you know, times I'm like three, I figured they got a man to call, three people show up, they need to have the times here, you know, your, uh...
Cause there's no way, there's no way to say to the, um, firemen, you know, we're only gonna send three of you out there, well...
Well, I'm guesstimating that, you know, it's an estimate.
So, it's, it's, it's hard to say. We have to come to an agreement.
I look at my runs as they come in, you know, uh, through every month and usually there's three, maybe four per run. Sometimes one, sometimes two, but it looks like...
Yeah, but, but I'm, I guess, because we're gonna pay more so we have more firemen's responding?
After we're...
Isn't that what the intent is?
Yes.
So, then the intent would be to have this higher?
Well, we're only paying ten right now.
Okay, but if we go to fourteen, are you doing it per run or per hour on these runs? Is we per run?
Right now. It's up to discussion.
Yeah, okay, uh, this is discussion.
Right, put it on.
So, you have twenty-two forty for four hundred and eighty runs?
Yeah.
At fourteen dollars.
Yeah.
Right? So, per entity would be twenty-two eighty.
Yeah.
The total cost would be sixty-seven twenty, right? No? What is this sixty-seven?
Where you at, where you at?
Sixty-seven.
Runs at fourteen, that's four, four hundred and eighty at fourteen dollars, you got sixty-seven twenty.
What is sixty-seven twenty? Is the fourteen the four hundred and eighty runs? Yeah, I'm gonna look this line.
Estimated runs?
Yeah. Estimated medical runs.
Six runs is four hundred and twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's at, that's at my estimate, four hundred and eighty runs, which is a lot more runs than that, you had to add two hundred more onto that, okay?
Okay.
Then times it by four hundred, but then you might have more, oh, that's just medical, oh, that's, you know, you might have two or three different people show up.
Yeah, so you're gonna, this, this number is just...
That's gonna be a lot bigger now.
Yeah, this is just based on what existing now.
Was based on whatever Mark had at the time, whatever numbers he had available to look at.
Right.
You can go back to the history like Dave when he went to, uh...
Oh, I went back to some of Mark.
And got all the information that you needed, right?
That, mm, through, uh, there's one here with our, that relates to our budget that I pulled up, so...
I don't know if you know, I, I just wanna ask a question, when I look at that Kokol stuff, they pay the same if the guy's got EMS training or not, right?
No, if you look, if you look, George, if you look on... No, if you look, if you look, George, if you look on the folder, gets, if they're assistant chief, it also, if you go to the combination of firefighter, medical responder, just a medical responder, just firefighter, there's different wage levels that they have.
I don't know, I'm missing it, I don't, I don't see that the guy's got EMS training, though, right?
On, on page...
Where's it stated?
Right, where, on that page where it says, you have the lieutenant part four, and then you jump to part five, and then the number part six is a combination firefighter, medical responder.
Okay, all right, okay, I was looking at the other page, sure, so you got it out here, so they get paid a different... Looks like they get paid the same rate then, right?
Run rate fourteen twenty-eight for, for the first hour, and if you're just a firefighter, it's twelve twenty-four for the first hour, correct?
And then, right, and then your second hour basically is all the same at ten twenty. And then while they're in training, they get ten twenty.
Technically, wouldn't it be, the fourteen dollars an hour would be your medical runs, because usually medical runs don't go over an hour?
What I did for an average, looking through ours, I went through, and we're probably, it averages out to be about an hour, less than an hour, and that's what John said, Chief Martinsky, when he was here, that it's about an hour that we're on scene for a medical. We're usually not over that unless the firefighters pull the ride, ride with the rig in. So you're looking at basically eighty percent of it's just gonna be an hour, and probably from what I've, I've been looking, our average housefire up here is about three hours, so... And then we get into the situation of wires, but we won't go there.
Hey, Dave?
Yeah?
On your housefires for three hours, does that include coming back and fueling the trucks and all the cleanup?
No, that's just on time. The way that most of the guys are doing it is the time that you're on scene, that's why, that's something that has to be discussed, but it's harder to keep track of everybody's wages when you're on scenes, and then when you come back, because you have some guys that will leave and go someplace or come back, so it'll be tricky to keep up.
And there's still counting the guys that are coming back, you know?
So...
Well, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't understand, yeah, but that's all, no, assistant chief, I don't know what that means.
Dave, what does it mean when it says, uh, get paid for not on duty?
Without on duty, what does that mean?
Whereabouts? On all of them, uh, pay five, six, seven, I think it is, all of them.
Yeah, you got, when, when not on duty, you get paid fourteen twenty.
Well, if they're on duty, they get paid a hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents for a twelve-hour shift. But then if they're not on duty, but they're gonna respond anyway, because they respond, you'll get the fourteen twenty-eight. Am I right?
Right.
Without on duty, that's okay, all right, I didn't know what you meant by that.
Wouldn't this, wouldn't like, the assistant chief's duty salary for his twelve-hour shift, that's it, he doesn't get paid for being on runs, but if he comes in after that twelve-hour shift...
Oh, so that's what you're saying there?
Since he gets fourteen, when not on duty.
Oh, okay, all right, so that's the same as this fellow at Clay Township, that he gets paid a salary, but every...
He gets paid for his runs.
Anything, after six P.M. to six A.M., he gets twenty dollars for every run he goes on. Okay, so that's what you're saying, yeah? Okay, all right, I got you now.
Wait a minute, so the chief of that department gets sixty-five grand a year, and then they pay him to go on at night?
Yes, for every run he goes up, yes. Well, I'm just telling you what this means.
No, but when you think about it, the chief is, is, in most departments, is basically a salary position, which means that you're responsible...
Theoretically, he should not be, because he should be classified as an exempt...
Right.
Employee, right?
Right.
And thirty-five or thirty-six thousand is your exempt employee.
Didn't we just address that with you?
Yeah, ten years ago.
Well, seems like yesterday, Dave, but we did address that with you, we couldn't pay for both.
That's, that's when I was, that's when I got my four hundred and twenty-eight dollars a month.
Yes.
That's when I got that.
You wanna thank us again?
Hey, I'm just saying, I'm looking at this guy's weight.
No, yeah, I mean, theoretically... So chief commission, you get paid then, weekly or monthly, plus you get per call it? No, no, you're just, you're just a non-exempt employee, right?
The four hundred, yeah, the four hundred and twenty-eight hours is my runs.
Everything, training, everything.
My mileage, everything.
Okay, great, right. That's a pretty good deal out there, wherever the hell...
Well, it is, I mean, you know, I asked him also, I says, how can you be paid that, because theoretically, you shouldn't be getting paid this...
Right.
If, if the, the, what is it, the government standard is...
Well, if you're not exempt, if you're not exempt, you have to fall under FLSA, and you either be declared as a forty-hour employee or a fifty-six-hour employee. There are only two choices you have, or a fair length. So if you're the chief, yeah, you're basically on a salary position, you don't have to meet those requirements, it doesn't say how many hours, nobody can tell you how many hours you have to work, you know, if you work sixty hours, fine, and you work twenty, and the board is happy with that.
So long as it meets that minimum, since number, yeah. So I don't know how we, I asked him that question, anything?
That's how you pay me, is the majority?
Yeah, right, exactly.
It's a weekly, very weekly?
Mark?
Yes?
Just, just a question, just to clear my mind up. Under the first part, the total is forty-five thousand, six twenty-seven, right?
Okay.
So that's just, I know what you're saying, that has to do with the twelve-hour shift, per unit, and what we're currently paying.
That's correct.
So, that would be, that would be for our full-time person and our operating cost, right?
Correct, correct, twelve-hour shift.
Now, what are we looking at as the cost that it would be for, if we went with medicals and regular runs? Do we add the forty-five, six twenty-seven again?
Yeah, I'm looking at the bottom where I did add them, and it went up to, if we get, just medical, medicals and runs went up to forty-seven. They're talking two thousand, two hundred and forty, that's on my figures that I had here, which are low, okay?
That's just medicals?
Just medicals is gonna be forty-seven four, there's not a big change in them, okay?
Right.
Four hundred dollar difference is all.
Right.
See that? So it's not a big difference of just doing medicals, or just doing runs, or doing medicals and runs together. If you wanna use that as a, just looking at it to see how much difference it does, if you just do medicals and medical runs and that.
So what you're saying for the medical runs and the regular runs is forty-five, six twenty-seven is an estimate?
Yeah.
Okay, so you would add that for, to the forty-five, sixty-seven on the top, correct?
No, that's forty-five, sixty-seven already there, is what I started...
Okay, but what I...
And then I added two thousand, two hundred and forty.
To pay your guys?
Yeah, that, we're paying for medical runs.
No, you, you add two thousand, two hundred and forty for medical and runs.
And runs, right.
So...
Your total is forty-seven thousand.
Forty-seven thousand would be each unit's total?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get anything close to what we might be looking at per unit. And then if you look down the line, uh, medical runs, just medicals or just runs, there's not that big of a difference in all three, you know, as far as if you do medical runs and just medicals or just runs, there's not, there's not a big difference. You know, you're talking a thousand dollars here.
No, you're talking about like twenty, twenty-five, or twenty-four hundred dollars.
Did you pull your, did you pull your cost per runs, is that what you pulled?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're only looking at, if we're paying ten dollars now, you're only looking at a four-dollar increase, right? So that's what it is, okay?
I went by fourteen, yeah. So all, some are getting paid eight, some are getting paid ten, it's, uh, it's different, it's one zero three. I just wanted to show a little total here of what, and, and, and the questions all at the bottom, you know, extra cost, uh, we know already it's gonna be more, because I didn't have the estimate of how many runs we made, I put four hundred, or what I have. Four hundred and eighty, we're running seven hundred runs, you know, so you're talking, you know, fifty thousand dollars one way or the other on it, if you might guess, per unit, for the twelve-hour shift. I don't know what it'd be cost with the authority, you'd have to look at that, that, you know, like Dave was talking about, that's something else you'd have to get estimates on. Like I say, I, I was playing with it, there's a lot of questions to answer, you know?
What do you think the next step should be? Do you think maybe we should get the other units to government and see what their opinion is, or what they think we should do?
Well, as far as authority, yes.
Well, I think if we're gonna view all options...
Right.
And we wanna do this to make sure we're doing the right thing, we need to sit down with the other units, and sit down even with, if you wanna talk to LaSalle and to Dave, and have them in a group meeting to find out, you know, 'cause, not to waste time, but we should get, to check those options out.
Yeah, because if they're not gonna be getting called and...
Right, maybe Northern Bay don't want to.
Well, you know, the thing I, I wanna make sure is we don't duplicate things, you know, Northern Bay is doing certain things, you know, a lot together, the fire department do the same things again, duplicating effort, I think somehow, that's somehow what we need to work together. I think that's one of the things Bob brought up, make sure that we work together, whatever we have.
Well, I just, you know, cost efficiency would be the best...
Yeah.
Right.
For it, um, most would be the best care for the community and the people, you know, I mean, I can speak personally, you need the ambulance. And I mean...
It was nice to have that ambulance parked at Fraser Township, people to see it.
You know, it's, it's just availability and the care, so, um, both of the...
No, what I meant by that is not trying to duplicate the same thing that Northern Bay ambulance is doing, you know, that's...
Well, we're not gonna do the same thing Northern Bay ambulance is doing, we're not gonna transport, the fact is, is getting the care to the people as first responders, as...
I don't think, I would like to see us go back, I mean, I would like to see us be first responders and keep that license, but I certainly would like to see, you know, instead of going backwards, going back, I would like to keep the first responder's license, but I certainly like the idea of an authority where we're providing a service, 'cause it's not gonna be just for us, it'd be for everybody.
I don't, that might be a, a good way to go, I guess, if the other people...
You're off the pipe over there.
I think if you're gonna do that, you might just get a second ambulance, 'cause I don't think one person in a car is gonna, gonna do nothing. Still gonna have to call for a mutually ambulance from someplace, I don't even know where you guys get a mutually ambulance from out here. Does it come from Stanish, MMR, or does it come from McLaren?
Both, yeah, McLaren comes.
You gotta, it's gonna be a whole lot different, 'cause I just came from a, a medical advisory board, and I got one Thursday, is with, with the new paramedic system, they're gonna go private, MedStar?
Yeah, we don't know what that...
And we have no clue what's gonna happen there. Uh, McLaren is just filling in now, they haven't taken over, they thought they were gonna take over the first of November, but they haven't, and they're all very nervous over there at McLaren, I can tell you that.
Tom, I have anything to say?
No, this, I think that whoever comes up with the plan that works, and, and you may have to go through two or three different plans...
Right.
Before you find one that, that works.
And that's example Auburn, I talked to John again this week, and he, they're still rewriting what they started with, so, they're uncertain.
And that's probably gonna happen to all of them, you know?
So I say I took this together, and I was all good with it, but it's, it's something to work on.
Do you think maybe tomorrow, 'cause we have a meeting tomorrow, and we have all the, we have all the units together, that maybe we could, even if it would be after the meeting, ask the other units if they're interested, so we could get a meeting date, so we're not wasting a lot of time?
Well, we got Mike here.
He's only one.
Only one other one, that's Garfield, that's Jim.
Mm-hmm, and see if we can...
At least, he's in favor, that I believe, right?
Mr. Monteika, or, or you're talking about Mike?
No, I'm talking about Mike, Mike has mentioned that he does, he favors the authorities, right?
Yes, sir, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that guy said, we gotta do something where we can try to work together. The only thing I wanted to bring up for Fraser Township, and it's, it's gonna come up, I just wanted to give you a heads up of what's probably gonna happen. If these can go with the second ambulance, and I know you guys are arguing about having another Fraser Township, but what's the distance from there, Red Lake, Pen County to Fraser Township, how far is that?
About seven miles.
Seven miles? So that's virtually ten minutes longer to get just from there to here. So me at Mount Forest Township, that's ten minutes longer. I would much rather see that ambulance sit here with Northern Bay, 'cause they have the room for it. So, and I'm not fighting that, and I know you're arguing about what you'd like, I'm just telling you that the timeframe for the residents of Mount Forest Township is much better if that ambulance, or whatever rig that first response rig is, if it sits in Pen County.
Well, that ambulance, one would be here and one would be in Fraser, you'd still have, you would have two, Louis. The other thing you gotta look at is, you know, we got Linwood, and we got a lot of people in Linwood, that's our, you know, concentrated area, so...
But you gotta look at Gibson, I'm by there.
Yeah, but you're still...
I'm not saying Gibson compares to Linwood, I'm just saying distance.
And we're talking two ambulances, you'll have one here, we'll have one there.
It would be great if you had two, matter of...
That's what we're looking at.
I think it would be two.
The twenty-four-hour thing is fire trucks is what we're looking at, having a fire truck stationed in Fraser is what, the twenty-four-hour thing is what we're looking at.
Right, you keep, you keep talking about that fire truck being in Fraser, these people that are complaining that they don't have one, give them an application. Get the people over there. We don't, the generation nowadays, nobody wants to use them, you young kids.
We understand that.
All right, you gotta keep, you gotta quit bringing that up about the fire trucks. We gotta get people in order to have their fire trucks.
I can't quit bringing it up, 'cause I get bugged all the time, you know? We have a village, I gotta keep saying, we got a village, okay?
That's right, give them an application, if they complain about it, find them, let their kids come and join the fire department.
So where's Hunter Lewis at from us?
Do that, give them an application, they, they, families over there have got kids, give it to them, let them join. I know how hard it is, how hard it is to do it.
I know.
All right. Mark, your best coverage for Fraser Township with the given situation is where that truck is now, it's here. You've got the people from here to be able to take it, get...
No, we know that.
And there's no better solution for right now, unless you can come up with people that go through all that training that Ron and I and quite a few other people did, there is no other answer.
No, I, I think what, you know, and what Ron's saying, yeah, get people to come and volunteer and be firemen, yeah, it's difficult, but I, I think the thing that's being, I guess dramatized or whatever it is, is that if people come into our office there and say, hey, the truck's not here, and like you said, don't bring up the village, but they're gonna say, the next election comes, they say, we're not gonna vote for the village. That's the issue, see, they're saying, why should we pay ninety-four thousand dollars a year and don't have it, see? That's the issue, the issue is we may lose that village. So we can say all the things about it, it's not good.
But you have the trucks sitting there empty and still...
No, I, I just, I'm just trying to tell you, Ron, with the, the issue, that's it, see?
But you're gonna have a fire truck sit there, and get a village, and you're still gonna have no way to show up.
I know, but I'm just saying, if we don't have the village, that's ninety-four thousand dollars, we're gonna lose it, we helped pay for all of this stuff.
And Ron, the first thing out of my mouth is when they say it is, look, you know, the safety, and when Dave explained it to me, everybody else explained it to me, it's safer to have the fire truck up here, where you got first responders, 'cause all go to Pen County, and then they go. That's my explanation to everybody. Now, if they wanna understand it or listen to it, that's up to them, okay? But if they come in and ask why, that's the reason I give, I don't say, well, they're, they're giving us the shaft and that, but not bringing us one, no.
No, we're not saying that.
We, when somebody comes into my office, or they call me on the phone, I explain to them, just like Dave explained to me, it's quicker to get response out to Fraser Township, to the village of Linwood, if the fire trucks are here. And that's what I tell everybody that calls me.
The other thing, Dave, about getting people and so forth, have we ever, uh... The other thing, Dave, about getting people and so forth, have we ever chiefs and so forth gone out to Delta College and asked?
I'll tell you what has been done, probably five years ago. Randy Vanderbilt, Chief of Hampton, Don Kramer for monitor, and myself approached the skill center. Skill center to put a fire academy in there, where we would take kids from high school, it would go through the fire academy, be trained by instructors like myself, and do that. The skill center would not put that into their program, they have the police, but they would not put the fire. Delta College for ten years, probably, I would say, has had a firefighter class that is available at the school, so anybody going to those colleges, to Delta, can go to us and have it be paid, they'd have to pay tuition to Delta, but those are there available to the students. The only other thing we can do is start maybe going to the high school in the last year of high school, in their senior year, and making a bigger presentation to it, but those are there. There is an academy, a cadet program that the state has that we can get students, but we need somebody here to supervise them during their training and going back. There's only been three, I think there was about three or four last year that went through the academy, I graduated, and I don't think there's any this year going through the academy from the high schools, and that's all that they come. So the interest, it isn't like years ago where you liked the red lights and sirens, you know? There's no interest for them to, to do that.
If you had a full-time chief or something, then that would probably help out, then what they have.
Everybody has issues.
Even though they have the old chiefs there, and still the people don't want to come in and get trained.
Call Collins short, Hampton short, Hampton's going to public safety, that's the first public safety, so.
Yeah, they all got problems, like I said, I talked to this guy in, like, four zero, in, you know, in Clay Township, I think they get like eleven thousand people, eighty-one score miles they cover, and same thing, you know, but he says that, you know, with the local college and trying to get people and so forth.
But those, those things would have been, you know, we, we went and met with the skill center, and there was no.
Dave, do we want to set up another date for another?
Why don't we?
Or do we want to do it at a budget workshop and combine it to?
I would, I, what I'd like to see us do is find out if we can get the other units together, and Bob LaSalle, and sit down at a roundtable and discuss what the options are, and I'd like to still do that this month if possible. And I love afternoon meetings, you guys look so much better in the afternoon?
Mike, your eyes aren't tired.
Is that what it is?
My problem is the afternoon meeting, but, you know.
You prefer evenings, in other words, right?
It, it works better, but later in the afternoon, that one o'clock would be, would be more advantageous.
Like three?
Three thirty, four o'clock, just so that it would be, I can adjust my date.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think all we got is, you know, the timetable.
You give a response to burn a light.
Yeah, then we can set them up, we can email everybody, set it up. Okay, got that?
And there, there also is, with doing it together with Northern Bay, there also is a rehab thing that falls into the fire service that was discussed, and I mean.
Do you think we could, if we do that, do you think it'd be a good idea to make sure the chiefs are here too?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Chiefs will give me, Louis there, I don't know, who's Garfield?
Brad Hoppin. Brad is assistant Brian.
I think I'm off to a journey.
Wait a minute, we got to pick a date, how do I work it, it's Christmas? Yeah, forty minutes on your tab, sixteen to seventeen, that's for me. So we'll look at the sixteenth or seventeenth, because it's Monday, Tuesday.
How's that for you, Dave?
Okay, I'll look it up, I'll email everybody after we talk tomorrow, to see if it's even possible to get everybody together for another workshop, is that what we're calling it, right?
The sixteenth won't work, they said.
So, what was the sixteenth?
Monday.
Monday, seventeenth, Tuesday.
Tuesday the seventeenth.
Hey, Mark?
Yeah?
If you get the other entities to go along with it, that's going to be tomorrow night, isn't it?
That's Northern Bay ambulance.
Northern Bay ambulance is tomorrow night, so we'll discuss a little bit.
Okay, if that's, if that's the case, then the workshops you're having, you should be inviting them also.
We would, that's what we're talking.
Oh, yeah, that's why Bob, I think she mentioned that Bob LaSalle would be there, right?
Yeah.
It's just get three entities together, plus the chiefs, and then Bob too, so I'll work on it.
Yeah, you definitely have to have Bob to make sure he's on board.
Yep.
Can I make one comment, Mark?
Sure.
Not to rain on your parade about getting, putting the second ambulance in, but if you bring it, if you put a second ambulance on, what's to prevent that ambulance getting pulled, just like the first one does?
Nothing, you got to understand what, you know, mutual aid is going to be there, it's got to be there. I'm talking about auto aid, that you've got auto aid coming in, so we relied on auto aid all the time.
We talked about ambulance as far as what medical was.
Right, right.
But at least if it gets, if the one in Fraser gets pulled to Bay City for some whatever, at least you don't worry here.
The second ambulance we had was used for transport, that's what its main job was when it was in Fraser Township. Okay, they were trying to make a little more money to validate or whatever, to have that fire, the second fire truck, okay? We kept it at Fraser.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying, I know that in Midland, Mid-Michigan put on a truck, it was the supervisor, the ambulance supervisor truck, with fully equipped truck with the supervisor who was fully qualified advanced life support, but couldn't transport. And if you're looking for something to, like Dave said, if you want somebody to stay in the area, that can't be pulled.
Be like a neckel.
Because you're not yet, they're, they're not going to pull him to transport, he's going to have, obviously he's going to have to wait if somebody needs transported, and the ambulance isn't there, but it's going to stay in your area. It's not going to be able to be pulled, unless you get a mutual support, mutual aid, something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, unless they're mutual aid, and they request, you know, and that's, I don't know how, I don't know whether you guys belong to neighbors out here, or whatever, yeah. So, I mean, you know, box cards set up for different things, and, and one of them, it could be, if you have a supervisor here for EMS, and there's an EMS box, that supervisor's got to go. You know, the chief here got to go if he's on a box somewhere, so, you know.
If you're wrong, let me know, I, it's not permanent, these are not permanent, okay, Jerry? If you have a problem with some of these dates, let me know, and then on the twenty-second, our next regular scheduled meeting for the fire board is on January twenty-second, okay? I am working on a new schedule for next year, so if you have any problems with the schedule I gave you, let me know, and then I'll change it on my computer, and then on the twenty-second of January, I'll bring up to date one, and I'll make sure you guys get one. Well, it's on our old one, oh, see, that's why this is two thousand twenty-one. Oh, okay, twenty-second is our next meeting.
I'm adjourned.
Support, on paper? I got Sherry holding on.